Oh, nice.
Just let us make this, let me make it to the kingdom like that.
We just keep, we just keep moving, huh?
Good evening and welcome to Winterville Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, October the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, the time now six o'clock. Uh, tonight, invocation is gonna be a moment of silence, uh, for a young lady, uh, that was a resident of our community, Ms. Kimmor Robinson, uh, a senior at South Central High School, uh, that we lost, uh, this past Tuesday. And also, uh, for the families in Fayetteville, uh, that lost three young athletes, three young students as well. So, tonight, we're just gonna do, uh, a moment of silence and, um, pray for these families in your own way. Now, if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone here, uh, to our town board meeting, uh, this month of October, with it being breast cancer awareness month. I'd like to thank the, uh, council and the staff, uh, for, uh, showing, uh, their pink, wearing their pink and putting on pink ribbons. Uh, for me, it means a lot, you know, having family members that deal with this. And not just the women, uh, fellows, but we also got to be reminded that men can too have breast cancer as well. So, always make sure you're getting your health screenings and checking yourself. And also, there's mental health, but as well. I had said that for Dr. Harrell, so she would get on me if I didn't, but, uh, again, also remember that too. Uh, with that being said, I'm gonna move right on to, uh, roll call. Get your clickers. And everybody is accounted for, thank you. Uh, next up is the approval of the agenda, Town Manager, do we have any?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We do have one amended abstract related to park hour signage, and we have, uh, included that amended abstract at your seats in hard copy fashion. But I think that's the only change.
Okay, alright. With that being said, can I get a, uh, approval?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, agenda.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor, motion made by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Moore, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell to approve the agenda. Any discussion? If none, please get your clicker. Thank you, motion carried. Alright, next up is our proclamation, and, uh, Mr. Harvey?
Mayor, while Mr. Harvey's getting ready, uh, with approval of council, we'd like to just present one through three, but then we'll read in detail, uh, proclamation number four.
Okay, thank you.
This proclamation is in memory of Deacon Herman G. Waters Senior, who passed away this past week. Whereas Deacon Herman G. Waters Senior was born in Loroc County, down in the Valley of the Phillips Farm, to the late John and Janie Smith Waters. His father worked as a sharecropper and, like many families of the time, often moved in search of better opportunities. Family would come to settle in Aiden and eventually set roots in Winterville, where he became one of the first families in the Newtown community. Whereas Deacon Waters was blessed to grow up in a home where family meant everything. His parents, John and Janie, taught him the values of faith, hard work, and community. He also shared a special bond with his beloved sister, Eleanor O'Neal, affectionately known to the family as Sis. Her connection was so deep that many who knew them called us twins. And whereas, as a young man, Deacon Waters was active in the Boy Scouts of America and attended community churches for Sunday School and Vacation Bible School seminars. Deacon Waters attended Robinson Union School, graduating with the class of nineteen fifty-seven, and will go on to North Carolina A and T State University, where he graduated in nineteen sixty-one. Soon after, he enlisted in the United States Army, serving both on active duty and in the reserves. Whereas, when his military service concluded, Deacon Waters worked with Standard Oil Company of Tacoma, Washington. Thereafter, Deacon Waters would make his return back home to North Carolina. Over the years, Deacon Waters held positions at North Fountain, South Aiden, HB Suggs, and North Carolina Mutual. Later, and served as head chauffeur at A.C. Monk for twenty-five years, traveling across the country during peak tobacco seasons. Deacon Waters also worked with Pitt County Schools and Grove for Pats, faithfully transporting community members. And whereas sports were a joy to Deacon Waters, he loved basketball and running the hundred-yard dash. This energy carried him into participation in the Pitt County Senior Games. Deacon Waters coached recreational softball and devoted more than thirty years as scout master for Troop Two Eighty-Nine, where he earned both the Silver Beaver Award and Wood Badge Recognition. Deacon Waters loved young people and always sought to be a beacon of light for them. Deacon Waters also valued affiliations with Sandy Hill Lodge Number One One Nine of the Masonic Order and participated in the W.H. Robinson Alumni Association. And whereas Deacon Waters's faith guided every step of his journey as a young man, he joined Little Creek Free Will Baptist Church, where he remained a member. At Little Creek, he served faithfully in many roles, including Financial Secretary and Chairman of the Deacon Board. Deacon Waters was an active participant in the Northeast B Annual Conference Deacon Fellowship. Deacon Waters was all heart for family and helped organize both the Smith and Joyner Family Reunion, and alongside his cousin Martin, worked to preserve the Red Hill Cemetery for generations. Later in life, God led him to his wife of forty years, Linda Barrett Waters. Together, they built a blended family rooted in love, laughter, and faith. And now, therefore, I, Richard E. Hines, Mayor of the Town of Win- Winterville, hereby honor the legacy of Deacon Herman G. Waters Senior. In witness whereof, I do accept my hand and cause the seal of Winterville to be affixed this thirteenth day of October, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Barrett, if you could step. Thank you. Thank you, Don, for that. Uh, the other proclamations, we're to, he, call them all. The other proclamations were, uh, fire prevention week, uh, public power week, and course breast cancer awareness. Uh, so, next up, we have our public hearings, uh, six annexation petition, uh, Stephen.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Town Council. We do have one, uh, public hearing tonight is for Eli's Ridge Phase Six. Uh, this, the applicant is Bill Clark Holmes. This is right between Worthington Road and Lori Ellis Road, within the existing Eli's Ridge subdivision. Um, this will be located right on Hunter Grace Drive and Eli's Drive, as we'll see right here in a second. It's a small eight-point-eight acre site, um, and Phase Six will allow for twenty-four more lots, um, to be developed in that subdivision. And if you're looking at this map, this is of an, an aerial. The addition is right here within this, uh, section, adding on to the existing subdivision. Seeing it a little bit more clear on the annexation map, oh, this is the existing subdivision. This small eight acres is what's being added right now. Staff does recommend approval of this annexation petition and for it to become effective October thirty-first of this year. If anybody has any questions, happy to answer.
You may have any questions for Stephen right now?
I have a question that probably does not deal with the annexation. Um, as they get farther and fur- farther back on this land, does it have to be, pass a per test, uh?
No.
Testing going on to see if it drains well?
Well, everything in this is, uh, sewer through the town, but, um, the construction drawings were designed for the stormwater aspect of it, to send it to the ponds and things like that, to make sure that all of the stormwater meets state requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, uh, can open up the public?
Mayor, before you do, uh, Councilwoman Robertson, I just wanted to remind council that the back half of this development will be a different water system. It will be Eastern Pines Water Corporation, so just a reminder, uh, as we move forward, that there will be a different provider.
Alright. Any, any other questions? If not, uh, I'd like to open the public hearing, uh, for Eli Ridge Phase Six. If anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this? Is anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of Eli Ridge, uh, Phase Six? If there's no one that not speak in opposition of it, anyone here that would like to speak in favor of Eli Ridge, uh, Phase Six annexation? With there being none, I now close the public hearing, and what is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the annexation to be effective on October the thirty-first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Who, who did second? Okay, alright. Uh, I have a motion by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Moore, second by Councilwoman Smith, um, to approve the annexation of Eli Ridge Phase Six. Any discussion? If none, please use your clicker. Motion carried, thank you. Next up is, uh, public comment section, I mean, public, yeah, public comment section. And before we go into public comment, I need to read this. Public comment policy. The public comment period of thirty minutes provide an opportunity for residents to comment on any item included in the agenda to address the town council on any other matter related to the town of Winterville. For items included in the public hearing section of the agenda, residents should address the council at the time the mayor invites public comments on the item. No public comments may be made, excuse me, may be made to the council during the meeting, except during the public comment period or as part of the public hearing. Individual speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes, and no more than three speakers may address the council on a single matter. The town council may elect to take no action on the matter addressed by, a speaker may schedule the matter for further consideration at a future council meeting or may refer to matter to the town staff for disposition. Copy of the public, I'm sorry, copy of the town public comment periods are available in the rear of the assembly room. And tonight, we do have one, and as Ms. Matt, Matt DeJesus.
Hello, everybody knows who I am, know where I live. Um, I wanna speak about, um, bad cops. I'm not saying that we have bad cops here in Winterville, but, you know, bad cops are do deeds so horrific. I tell you, look, you think that all the cops are like that, but they're not. We have, uh, last Thursday, we played bingo, and I, I, for some reason, I just cannot win bingo. And Veronica and many will give me their gifts that made me feel like coming. But last Thursday, there was a cop in there, and the cop won, and the cop said, I'll give my present to Ms. Matt, and I was so happy, oh! A cop, can you believe that? That's what I call a good cop. So, Winterville has some good cops. I'm not saying that they're bad, but one that stands out, Officer Hamilton. I feel so good that we got a good cop. He don't, he not do it just for me, he doing it for other people here in town also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna give him a big hug, I'll be watching, 'cause this hug is for him.
Thank you, Ms. Maddie. Alright, next up is, uh, consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve?
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Moore, Mayor Pro Tim Moore, and second by Councilwoman Robertson to approve the consent agenda, any discussion before we move? If none, please vote by using your clicker. Don, need a vote.
Sorry.
Uh, motion carried, thank you.
I, I would like to share, uh, if the police chief would share about the street closing during the Hallow- Halloween event, if you don't mind. Can do it?
Uh... I think it's, yeah, it's on consent, okay, yeah.
I just want him to explain it, so everybody will know.
I'm sorry. Good evening, council. Um, so, basically what happens is, every year, we close that one side that tiebreakers is on, and, and we have the Halloween event over there, it's closed, the pedestrian, I'm gonna get it out, for pedestrians. Um, as it has grown, we need more room, plus we are doing a, uh, drunk driver, uh, motor vehicle safety symposium at the same time this year. Um, that will be on the other side as long, as well as other Halloween booths. So, it just makes sense to close off the whole block. There's Mill Street to get around, there's Church Street behind us to get around. I don't see it on a Sunday afternoon causing a serious impact to traffic for three hours. So, it's just to allow pedestrians to feel free in that neighborhood without concern for safety as, as motors come through there.
Chief, I assume the businesses in the area have been informed and everybody's aware?
Yes, ma'am, they usually participate in the event.
Right.
Just so everybody knows, sad news, police station would be closed too.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, next up is Old Business Little Property Utility Service.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, you may recall back in August, at the regular August meeting, uh, this item was discussed, and I'm referring to one parcel. It's called the Little Property, it's parcel number nine-three-two-one-four-two-five-one Davenport Farm Road. They requested that the town provide them with water and electric services, both of those utilities are in our service area. Town Council voted that night not to provide services to this one, uh, lot due to the fact that we didn't have immediate utilities ready to extend. You may recall, we missed the second half of, of that, and that is, uh, getting council to vote that we request Greenwood Utilities Commission to serve this property with water and electric. We did not take that vote, I am asking for the council to retroactively, uh, approve that, approve Greenwood Utilities Commission to serve this property with water and electric.
So, how does that work? We, help me understand, is there some type of written agreement? Because this is them coming into our territory, I just wanna make sure we're very clear on what we want them to serve and not.
So, what happens is, uh, we would send a letter requesting them to serve this specific property in question, and then they would, uh, the actual head of water resources has already reached out to me, uh, just trying, they wanna make sure that we identify and that they formally accept the specific properties in question. This would be, uh, one of them. Does that answer your question? Councilwoman, okay.
And one other question, um, just to, for clarity for everyone, that, uh, it, it was a cost factor for us to, uh, provide the service that they needed for that one resident. It would've been very, very expensive.
I think costs and time, they were ready to, to move forward immediately, uh, we weren't immediately ready. So, I think in light of the fact, we had a similar discussion on a different piece of property, but we, this was in the same area and would want to ask them to, to serve, serve this one property as well.
Uh, do we know exactly approximately how much it would've cost for us to provide that service?
I don't recall, I'm looking at staff, I don't know that we actually did a cost estimate. Would, it would be far in excess of what it will, uh, be to have Greenwood service them. As a matter of fact, I think it's already underway.
Talking about the modular home, does he put there?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I noticed, well, I was over there a lot on that road, I noticed Greenwood Utility there.
Yes.
And I kinda wondered, you know, about that, because we'd had so much discussion about it.
Yeah, so this is really to formalize and have for the record moving forward that you all actually voted, uh, to allow Greenwood to serve it, so that ten, twenty years from now, somebody else is looking at the situation, it can be clear about the action that was taken.
So, Greenwood serves that house, will it serve the rest of that?
Just that property.
Will it?
Just the property that we're discussing this evening.
Those?
Anybody that already has the services will retain the services as is, and then any future vacant properties we will deal with, uh, as those requests come in. Does that make sense?
I'd like to make a motion that we retroactively approve Greenwood Utilities to serve the Little Property for Utility Services.
I second.
I have a motion made by Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell, second by, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Moore to retroactive, uh, Greenwood Utility Service seeing the Little Property with water and sewer, I mean, water, water.
And electric. And if we could actually, uh, Councilwoman Harrell, could we get the actual parcel number included? Because we do have another piece of property that's called the Little Property, so that we can just distinguish. It would be, uh, one minute, it would be parcel number nine-three-two-one-four.
Okay, nine-three, okay. I'd like to make a motion that we retroactively approve, uh, parcel number nine-three-two-one-four of the Little Property that Greenwood Utilities may service this property with, uh, water and electric.
And I second it, yeah.
Okay, so we have the motion and the second, uh, to let Greenwood Utility Service the Little Property with, uh, water and electric, property number nine-three-two-one-four, partial, nine-three-two-one-four. Any discussion on that? If not, clicker. Motion carried, thank you.
Can we, I know that this was a mistake, but can we make sure that this does not happen again? You know?
I don't think-
Because it seems like to me that they just went on and got, you know, without getting all the approvals that they needed to also.
I don't think this was, this particular parcel was a mistake. I think this was, uh, on the tail end of the previous discussion we have about, had about the other property in question. So, uh, I think what you will find us doing, that as we get these requests, we will bring every request to council, and I will be in touch, or staff will be in touch with the, uh, proper folks at Greenwood Utilities to make sure all of the approvals are in place. Yes, ma'am.
Alright, um, before we head into New Business, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Mr. Smith with us, uh, tonight in the audience. Next up is New Business, Southbrook Phase Two Preliminary.
Preliminary plat, I got you, Mayor.
Let me get some water.
Alright, tonight, we've got Southbrook Phase Two Preliminary plat. This is actually a revised or resubmitted plat that you guys saw earlier this year, and I'll explain the resubmission. This is the, uh, location of the site, just a reminder, we're, uh, Lori Ellis Road up here, and then to the north to south, we're going Church Street on the other side of it. Applicant is Southbrook N.C. LLC, or Scott Moore, he's with us today. Um, location again, South Street, or Church Street Extension and Lori Ellis Road. Uh, originally approved in April of this year, the applicant, uh, found sixteen lots that he was able to relocate, um, to avoid crossing a stream, or in this case, a riparian buffer. Um, and I'll show you exactly where the riparian buffer is located. It's got the same number of lots, so it's gonna have three-hundred-and-thirty-six single-family detached, forty-four single-family attached lots. Um, the average lot size is slightly smaller than the previously approved plat. The previously approved plat showed eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-one square foot as the average lot, whereas this one will contain seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-two square foot. Again, they were trying to relocate sixteen lots throughout the existing subdivision, or the existing Phase Two, in order to avoid this crossing. Single-family attached lots will, will feature the same size of two-thousand-two-hundred square foot. This is the location of the sixteen lots, and there is a stream or Nuth River Riparian Buffer running just right here, and I'll zoom into it. So, this is the, the plat itself, the previously approved plat. So, as you see, this road would create a bridge to cross right here for sixteen lots. Their resubmission terminated their road just before the stream and redistributed the, the lots throughout this, uh, existing acreage. Again, with this being a fairly larger subdivision, there was plenty of room to find those other, uh, lots, locations for sixteen lots. This is just an overall concept of the new map. Everything, again, is the same as the previous, same street, same layout. The only thing that changes is the sixteen lots that were located here have been, uh, replaced in other areas within the subdivision. Staff does recommend approval of this preliminary plat, it's gone through Technical Review Committee. This actually represents a better design for all parties, the developer, the town, future residents, and the environment as well. Uh, Planning and Zoning Board heard this at their September meeting and unanimously recommended approval as well. If anybody has any question?
Mr. Moore is here, can you step to the podium just one second?
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
All right. In removing the 16 and replacing them inside, it would take away some of the green space that y'all was looking for.
Actually, it adds more to it.
Add more to it, okay.
They were areas where there were lots is now open space.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted to know, because I know you was talking about a lot of green, green space and all that, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anybody else have any questions?
I don't, excuse me, I don't have a question, but I just want to comment that this plat and this property, can somebody clarify, did they say they were adding 16 more lots? Is that what we heard?
So they're relocating, so it's going to remain the exact same number of lots? These 16 lots that crossed this stream have been placed within other areas of this second phase in order to not have to cross this stream with a bridge.
So ideally, nothing is being added, it's just being spreaded, spread around.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Hey, Stephen, I got one.
Yes, sir.
When they're spread around like that, so they won't be together. I'm thinking that, would they all still be together? Or when you said spread around, you're talking about?
Yeah, so essentially, if you look at, that's not a good version. If you look at the entire area, kind of in this darker area, that's Phase Two. So it represents 245 acres in total.
Right.
So the area that they originally had, which is right here, within the 245 acres, they have squeezed some lots as well as some lots that they could create more area because there was not lots beside it. So it's all going to be still within the Phase Two area, so it is going to feel like a comprehensive project. It's not that those lots were placed in areas that don't make sense for the layout of the subdivision. Does that answer your question?
So will it be with the single-family homes around?
Oh, yes, sir. It will.
It will be some of those and some of the single-family homes and all that would be a little bit.
Designed together, yes, sir.
Designed together.
That's correct.
And that was not the original design though, right?
It was, yes, sir.
It was?
So you're speaking of, for instance, so in Phase Two, this area right here is a single-family attached. So it, it is, that has not changed at all for this proposal.
And nothing else go there?
So it's matching single-family for single-family.
That's correct, that's correct, yes, sir.
That's why I'm asking, yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So the type of housing doesn't change, it's just the location of those 16 individual
Lots themselves, that's correct.
But they still will be together.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Those 16.
Those 16 have been added to the existing single-family area.
In different locations.
You still have 16 lots. Not, it don't mean that they, if I'm understanding what you're saying, not, they're not going to be bunched together, but he's going to put them all, and they're still going to total the same amount of housing that he was going to build. Uh huh, right, that's, yeah, uh huh.
Yeah, I understand that part, but I was just wondering about them being smaller units around bigger homes in the, in the Phase Two. The Phase Two is going to consist of single-family homes, bigger lots, all of that. Is that correct? Because what I was looking at, what I was thinking was, those 16 lots that you had in the corner, they were smaller lots, and they're going to be kind of like by themselves. But now, we're talking about, we are moving them out and placing them in Phase Two, now they're going to be a combination with single-family homes?
They were part.
Or will it be mixed up all together? That's what, I think I had asked that question twice.
I think what we're saying here is that we have miles of roadway that is all within Phase Two, and we've just been able to take those 16 lots, and we, we're not taking away any other open space, we're just being able to place them inside. It's just a little bit more dense, same-sized homes, nothing changes there. It's just those, those 16 lots with all the mileage that we had inside the community, we're just able to absorb those 16 lots inside the single-family home area. All of it's going to be, it's the same design as it was before, we just, those lots are just absorbed in those two, two sections of Phase Two. And that's part of Phase Two as well. It's just we were able to take those lots and be able to fit them in.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Moore, but actually what you don't have on a safety perspective is this group of 16 up in a corner somewhere where it takes police and fire longer to get there to respond. You're actually enveloping them, if you will, into the larger swath.
That's correct. That's a great way to put it, yes.
Or do they interfere with the value of those homes that you're doing with the single-family home? I think that's where I'm at.
No, no, I mean, this isn't, this isn't a value difference at all. All of it's still the same as it was before.
Thank you, it's just the location difference.
Yeah, it's just the location difference, that's all.
I have a question. I do have a question now that the discussion has continued. How do we ensure, or how are we assured that the infrastructure, that flooding, that additional congestion on the infrastructure will not cause more on the town in terms of water flow, in terms of sewage? How do we assure this? And we can't, we know we're getting more properties, but what has been done to, to not add more, but to sustain and/or alleviate any more congestion or harm to the infrastructure?
Yes, ma'am. Actually, after the preliminary plat step, we'll then eventually receive construction drawings from the applicant themselves. That will then be dispersed to our Technical Review Committee. So every single kind of department, even outside of the town of Winterville, Department of Transportation, things like that, will get a look at this to ensure that it meets all standard and requirements. Yes, ma'am.
Via appro, this is preliminary plat. This is, this is a preliminary.
Right. After the preliminary plat, if approved, then following would be construction drawings that have all of the details of stormwater, things like that, you know, the street, actual how it's being constructed, and that's reviewed from our Technical Review Committee.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm just a little bit wondering, I was just still concerned about the single, but you kind of explained to me that it won't be so close knit to your single-family home, you know, because I keep on thinking that, you know, the way that you had it designed by, it was placed all together, those right there was in a, in a section by themselves, you know, like affordable type setting.
This will actually
Go ahead.
Create, it'll be a cheap, this is a less expensive design in the long run because they're not having to do all of the environmental studies and to construct over this, this, this bridge and the blue line stream with the buffer. So in the long run, it actually would be cheaper on the developer, but it'd actually be cheaper on the town in the long run too.
But the type of housing is not different.
Right.
It's not, it wasn't touted as affordable housing, it wasn't touted as single-family attached, it was straight up single-family, and it's just moving across the ditch, if you will.
That's very much correct.
Okay.
Really about lessening, and this gets to the other question about Councilwoman, it's a lessening of environmental impact because we're not building that street that crosses. So less impervious coverage, we're not impacting the Neuse River buffer, so this is better environmentally overall as well. So that's, so a lessen of impact, we're still building the same ponds, all the same stormwater still being built, all of it's being addressed. It's just, this is a better for the, for environmental aspect as well.
So what will happen to that land?
Right now, it's, it's, it's given over to open space. The community, just like the wetlands and the other areas, the community HOA will, will have it. But it's right now, we have no, there's no additional plans. It will maintain as, I think it's heavily treated now. That's, that's what we're envisioning.
Okay. And upon approving this preliminary plat as well, there is a note that states non-buildable open space as well. So that would have to be changed by council in the future if ever there was any proposal to change that on that land.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Need a?
I make a motion that we approve South Brook Phase Two Preliminary Plat as revised.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Motion made by Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell to approve South Brook Phase Two Preliminary Plat. Is any discussion? If none, please vote by hitting your clicker. It's Robson. Thank you. Motion carry. Next up is WH, WHRB Advisory Board Appointment College Member.
Thank you. At the last meeting of Human Relations Board, they recommended, first of all, let me say that at your all's discretion, it may be up to two high school and two college/university student representatives from high schools and/or colleges and universities located which serve the town of Winterville. Such student representatives would not be non-voting members, and they have recommended, we have an applicant on file, and they're asking her to be appointed. Her name is Shantasia Morris.
I make a motion that we appoint Shantasia Morris. She has been a continuance, a continual volunteer in all of the Winterville Human Relations Board. She is an up-and-coming future leader here in Winterville, and she serves as an example of what human relations can be. She is also a human relations major at Pitt Community College. So I highly recommend that we appoint her.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Do you have a question?
Question, yes.
What discussion?
I need a second first.
Oh, okay.
Where I can call a question.
A second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. A motion made by Councilwoman Hawkins, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell to appoint Ms. Morris, Ms. Morris, to the Human Relations Council. Now, question?
Mr. Harvey, is this process the same as any other process? Is it, you know, how, what was the process of, you know, the nomination, you know, was this posted anywhere, data reflect, or all the things?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We follow, we follow the same process you all are nominating, just like we would to any voluntary board in the town.
Thank you.
And because there still are some vacancies, we continue, and the Human Relations Board is also making an effort to get out to some of the schools here that serve Winterville to get more nominees.
And I just want to note that Shantasia applied back in July, and we extended the application process, and we still are with the youth subcommittee. That is who we are trying to target, our colleges, our college students. And so as of tonight, if there is anyone listening that is interested in being part of the Winterville Human Relations Board as a college member, please apply.
In the other discussion.
You know, you know that it, anyway, Shantasia is your daughter.
Shantasia is my daughter, yes. She's 20 years old. She's been volunteering for over a year now. And what I say in terms of that, there is no exclusion because she is my daughter. What I would say to anyone on any board, please encourage your children, your neighbors, everyone to come and be a part of the town and the intricacies and the boards. From over there.
Yeah, this one's in. I want you to repeat, you know, and I want, is, is it, it's not out?
I just think the volume.
Okay, I'm sorry. Continue, I'm sorry.
So, yes, she is my daughter. She has participated, worked hard, added hard work efforts in helping to reach out to the community. And yes, so she is my daughter, I'm proud to say, and I want her to be a part of the board. We have to set the tone for our future leaders in that maybe one day I might not be on the board, but she still can serve as a college student, a non-voting college student. But we must get our youth involved. We must start highlighting them in things that they are capable of. And as we had Kamora Robinson that passed away at South Central High School, she has done, she had done lots of things, right? We have to launch out, and when we see a little bit of effort, whether she was my daughter or not, she would be highly recommended because that is what we need to be doing.
Thank you.
I just would like to see if we could recruit some more people from the high schools, especially ones in our area, to serve on the board. Also, I'm not against your daughter. I think she's a fine young lady. I just would like to see it opened up so it does not seem like we're playing favoritism, that we are offering everyone the same opportunity. Just, you know, I just think that we should have more than one application, and we can appoint two. So I would like to see that.
So, and I, and I thank you for that comment, Councilwoman Robertson, but I, I, I'm not understanding why, why that is even being stated. There is no favoritism. If a youth person is volunteering their time and they are meeting the criteria, it should not matter if she's my daughter. What is this saying to the youth? If you are someone's daughter, you can't be a part of the board? And in addition to that, the application has gone out several times, been out. There is nothing else we can do except for maybe put up signs or push this throughout the website. And so while I, I know, and I know you think my daughter is a fine young lady, but just that very comment leads to question, why, why in the world would it be even thought of as favoritism? And so with that being said, I will be speaking to my daughter, and I will be asking her to withdraw her participation in the Winterville Human Relations Board, because it, it makes me sad that that word favoritism even came up, and all she wanted to do was volunteer. What would that be hurting anyone? That makes me sad in this town that because we are recommending her for appointment, she's not getting paid for it. By God, it's just volunteering to do something good.
Thank you. Let's call for a question.
I'm, I'm.
The question is called for?
I want to withdraw that appointment. Let, let's withdraw that appointment. That, that, that was. That, that, that was, that shouldn't have happened.
Councilwoman, the, the applicant would have to withdraw, correct?
Well, we've got a motion.
Motion, right.
We've got a motion on the floor. We need, we need to have the motion withdrawn.
Right. The motion was made, hold on, motion was made by Councilwoman Hawkins, second by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell. Now, we can vote, correct, or she can withdraw?
I, I, I think we, we're at the point where we'd either vote, or if, if the person who made, the individual who made the motion wants to withdraw it, then I think the board would, would need, need to vote, since we've had a second, need to vote to allow her to withdraw it. And then we could go from there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the, the, since we've had a, a motion and a second, I think our options are either to, to move forward and vote on it, or the individual who made the motion would ask to have the, the motion withdrawn. And since there's a second, I think the, the, the council would need to vote to allow to have the motion withdrawn.
So...
Hold, 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 I'm, I'm sorry, hold, hold, hold a second. But she can ask to withdraw it, right?
Right.
And Ms., she can withdraw the second, and then we'll cancel it out.
If she wants to withdraw, I guess withdraw the second.
Absolutely. I would like to withdraw the appointment for my daughter, Shantasia Morris, from the Winterville Human Relations Board as a college student, as a college member. I would like to...
So the motion is withdrawn with the minutes.
And I just say withdraw the second?
Yeah, you're just saying that you take that second.
Okay. What's the right verbiage?
Yeah, just, just, you, you're withdrawing your, your second on the motion.
Okay, I withdraw my second on the motion to appoint the college member.
Okay.
Ms. Morris. Ms. Morrison. I'm sorry, Morris. Ms. Morris.
Shantasia Morris.
Ms. Shantasia Morris.
Right. And then that would withdraw the, the matter from consideration, yes, sir?
Okay, all right. Thank you all. Thank you all for your patience on that, too. All right. So next up is park hour signage. I think we have...
I think, yeah, here comes Diane.
Some...
Do you have an amended abstract at your seat? And Diane will quickly go over that. The change is referencing the hours we are proposing. Staff had a, I will call a holistic discussion and staff meeting this morning, and we felt like in an effort to address all of the varying uses of our parks, both early in the morning and a little later in the evening, I turned it over to Diane.
Good evening, everybody. So currently, the town maintains three parks. We have Hillcrest Park, Water Tower Park, and Winterville Recreation Park. With the signage at present, one park entrance has sunrise to sunset. One park entrance has 7:00 a.m. to sunset, with a third displaying two different signs, one saying sunrise to sunset and 7:00 a.m. to sunset. I can back up. To eliminate any confusion and just with consistency across for all park signage, staff would like to recommend standardizing the posted hours to 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at all park entrances.
Yes, please. That is the request that we're asking council to vote on.
I'd like to make a motion that we standardize the posted hours to all three parks from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
My second?
Have a motion made by Councilwoman Dr. Brandy Harrell, second by Mayor Portion Moore, to standard, you just said standardize. Standardize our park signage to be posted from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for all, all park entrances, right? Correct? All right. Is any discussion?
Yes, I have discussion. So back in August, I came before the board and I asked it, I asked that hours be extended due to it being summer. And there was a vote against that stating that after certain hours, it's not safe in the park because it's dark. So now we have 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that's year-round. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So then it will be dark and unsafe at that time as well. What, what is making it different? That's my first question. And my second question is, does Winterville, and somebody, if we have this, please provide it for me, does Winterville have a policy and ordinance in place to regulate park hours in a public park? And if we do not, we need to change that and get that together today. Because if we don't have, and, and, and I'm going to find statute, as a public park, you cannot regulate hours without a policy or an ordinance. Whether it's on the town property or not, it is a public park. And then also, this being 9:00 p.m., this being 9:00 p.m. in the winter, this being 9:00 p.m. in the summer, and we are not stating safety as a factor anymore. Those are my two things.
If I may, Diane, I think staff has looked at a plethora of issues. One had been numbers of calls at the park regarding safety issues. I say at the parks, at the parks, all of the parks, our three parks. I think we've looked at that. I think we've looked at utilization. I think we've looked at, certainly, I think, and King, correct me if I'm wrong, we have the statutory authority to set the hours of operation for our properties, whether it's office, parks, et cetera.
Yes, we, we have the statutory authority to set the, the hours of operation for our, our properties.
So I think with that said, council, if you choose to vote on that this evening, that would be setting the policy. That would be the policy by which the police department and any of the regulating departments would go by, just like our office hours. So therefore, again, our recommendation of 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., I think coincides with usage, town events from time to time, and talking to folks who currently utilize the park outside the sunrise to sunset hours.
So Attorney King, you said you all have the statutory, say that again?
I, I, I think the, the, this council has the authority to set the, the, the time of operation of buildings and parks.
By policy, if it's voted on. That would become a policy.
If you vote on this matter right here, it would, it would become in effect a policy of the town.
Do we, or did we have any policy in place in our policies or ordinance up until this point?
I, I, I'm not aware if we do.
And that is the point I'm trying to make. What I'm trying to say is sometime when things come up, we're trying to make it complex and complicated. Up until this point, I want to make sure we're clear. We had not had a policy or ordinance on any of this. We had, we didn't have that.
If, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
It was not included in the code of ordinances.
Or a policy.
And I don't, I think if council approves the park hours, then that, and in fact, is a policy.
Yeah, and, and let me, let me jump back in there. I mean, I would assume, and looking at the, 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 the abstract, as it said, there's, I guess, three different types of timing for the, the different parks. I, I would assume that at some point in time, that's been approved by a, a, a prior council. So that in effect would, would set some type of timeframe for those particular parks. I think what we're trying to do today is to set a, a consistent timeframe for all three, and by the vote today is just the, I guess, the putting a, a new policy in place.
Again, I just want to be clear and transparent. I know we're trying to set a consistency in terms of time. Number one, in August, when I brought it up, it was, no, it's not safe. So now between August and October, it's safe. I'm, I'm not understanding how safety can change over 60 days. The, the problem, I, I was told that it wasn't safe if we extended it just for that month out of, you know, from summer to fall. It wasn't safe. But now it's safe all year. In terms of policy and ordinance, whether it was done in 1970, 80, 90, to whenever, there is nothing here. And, and time has been regulated. Folks have been told to leave the park at a certain time without a regulation, and I was told that the town can denote those times. I wasn't told that there was a policy, and this is just my point. And, you know, I, I know in a minute it's going to be called a question, and that's fine. But I'm being, we need to be transparent because now we're doing 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. because of whatever discussions over the last month or two. But when I brought it up, in the interest of those who wanted to stay in the park and play basketball, it was, no, it's not safe. That is my point.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
You're welcome.
I would like to say before we go to the vote, I am 100% in agreement with consistency in the signage and the consistency for all of the parks. I would personally prefer we remain with sunrise to sunset at all of the parks for that reason, in that as the year goes and times change, 9 o'clock at night in the wintertime, that's four hours of darkness many days. And I do have a concern over that safety. I'm, I'm 100% with the consistency in, in the signage, but I would prefer seeing sunrise to sunset. And again, that was just a recommendation for council's consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief Williams, could you come to the podium and speak to safety regarding these new hours? Or what that looks like when folks are at the park after sunset, before sunrise? What, what did that look like and what it would look like futuristic?
Generally, the problem we have, thank you, thank you. Generally, the problem we have with people in the park after hours is damage to property. You know, the four-minute water mount, water fountains, painting, scribbling on the tables, stuff like that. And of course, people carrying on in a way, in vehicles that they shouldn't be carrying on. It's not really a violence issue or whatever, but I, I would agree with Councilwoman Smith. I feel like it's too, too dark. Hillcrest is not well-lit enough to handle that. If you pay for the lighting to be fixed at Hillcrest, my mind would certainly change.
You said pay for the lighting to be fixed, so there's lighting there that needs to be fixed?
There's not really, no, I mean, a fixed.
Oh, a fixed, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I agree with it.
Lighting for the, the things and stuff like that. I mean, when it's dark, problems arise. I just, you know. That's why towns are so well-lit nowadays.
So, so after hours is conclusively, we don't want it after hours due to damage to property? Where, where's the track of, track records of damage to property? And where are any witnesses to these damage to property via the water fountain that's been out for years? That must have been damaged. And then in addition to that, where's the educational part in terms of community interaction with those in the park about keeping properties safe? And those that perhaps damaged it, you know, where are they? Who are they? How, how do we know the water fountain was damaged? And we're, we're specifying after hours. What about damage before hours? What about what's going on before hours? How are we concluding that if you're in the park before the set hours, you are abiding by rules? How do, how do we, how do we do that? Because that's not setting the tone like, okay, after hours is damage to property. But if you're in, if, if you were in the park before you were supposed to, were you not doing anything wrong? I'm just asking.
So there was about seven questions in there, so I'll just go with what I can.
No, there was, that was one question. That was one question.
So, yes, damage occurs during daylight hours, too. However, nighttime is when people, I think, feel more, you know, they damage things at, at the Winterville Recreation Park. I don't, I don't know that we've ever taken a damage to property report. At the Water Tower Park, there's not a lot to do there. But the Hillcrest Park also receives damage to property there.
Thank you for asking, answering my, my one question. I just want to be clear that setting these hours, i- i- initially, it was said that it's not safe, not specific for damage to property.
I understand that, Councilwoman, but I didn't say that.
I know, I wasn't, I wasn't referring that to you.
I was going to call for a question.
Thank you, Chief.
Call for the question. Okay. Call for the question. We have a motion on the floor and a second to posted, posted hours, consistency across all three parks from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Please vote by using your clicker.
I'm abstaining.
Your abstaining means?
Let me, let me do the abst...
One yes, three noes, and one abstain means no.
And abstention would be a yes, but it's, it fails three to two.
Three to two, right, three, two. I'm sorry. Your abstaining means yes, I'm sorry.
So just for...
Motion fail for extending the park hours from 9:00 a.m., I mean, from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
And I just want to make sure that, again, we, as Councilwoman Smith said, you know, we do have that across the board. Right now, across the board is sunset. Do we, I mean, if we keep it at sunset, I know that you, Councilwoman Hawkins, said that some people, or you just, people didn't know what time that was because sunset could be, as of right now, could be 5:30. In the summer, it could be 8:45. So I'm not sure how to articulate that to people as far as like sunset is when the sun goes down. I mean, you know, if we put that across the board, that is on all park signs that sun, you know, sunset, and then maybe send out alerts, you know, when the park is potentially about to close, I'm not sure. But, you know, I do agree with, with sunset as well. But the five to nine, you know, I just, I think that we need to have some sort of standardization, as you spoke about, across all three parks.
Again, regardless of whether we change, the signage needs to be changed.
Right, that's what I'm saying. All three need to say either sunset, 7:00 p.m.
That needs to change regardless.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
I have every confidence in our constituents that they can utilize their phone, the news, the weather, sunrise, sunset, or on the news every day, on your app. I, I believe that our constituents are able to do that. I would like to make a motion that we have consistent signage across all of our parks, stating that the parks are open from sunrise to sunset.
I'll second that.
Got a mo, we got a motion on the floor, Councilwoman Smith, second by Councilwoman Robertson, to have consistency signage for all, all parks from sunset, sunrise to sunset. Any discussion on that?
Yes, I have a discussion. That is not definitive. And while we can have confidence in some constituents to know what sunset is, if they are in the park and they don't deem it to be sunset, and they don't have anything to reference, how is this regulated without a policy or ordinance? Right? How are we regulated? What if law enforcement says it's sunset and somebody thinks it's not? What, how, how is this wor... What, how, how is this working? This is not working because there is no policy in place to regulate this. Now, if there's children in the park and their parents send them to the park, they don't know the difference between sunset or sunrise or what. So, I think that we, as a board, need to come up with something definitive a- as opposed to leaving it up in the air. Because there is no policy or ordinance on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. Please vote by using your clicker. Got slide, will we?
Diane.
I'm sorry, yeah. It went blank. Do I need to do a hand count? Okay, here.
There we go.
No, no, you went too far.
There we go.
There we go, all right. Please vote, please, with your clicker. Motion carry, uh, five, five zero. Thank you. Next up is River City Contract.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Um, staff is seeking approval from council for permanent part-time employees to be absorbed by a third-party contractor. The local government employees retirement system has restrictions on these employees that hinder their availability to work as often as they're needed. Employment under a third-party contractor will lift these restrictions, and this will be beneficial for our electric department.
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, um, I've reviewed the contract, the first two pages. The, the first two pages are actually based on, I think, a document that I was involved in drafting back in two thousand and eight. Um, however, the attachments, uh, I did have a couple of questions about. Um, and, and I would ask, um, in, in moving forward, I suppose we got two options. One is to, to table this to November. Um, if, if you're comfortable with the option, another option would be to approve it, subject to my review and, and revisions to, uh, Exhibit A and B. Um, the contract itself, though, I think I'm, I'm fine with. It's just the exhibits to it that I would like to discuss with the, um, River City. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have with me.
Uh, I would like to see it table because I, I wouldn't sign it. I mean, and I would have to sign it, so I would like to see it table. Until we can get everything worked out before we even go that route.
We need a motion to table?
Yes.
I make a motion that we table the River City contract until approval by the attorney.
I second.
Motion, motion made by Councilwoman Robinson, second by, uh, Councilwoman Dr. Brandon Harrell to, uh, table the River City contract until the attorney, uh, look, look it over. Okay? Any, any discussion on that? Please vote by using your clicker. Motion pass, uh, five zero. Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna take a recess for a second. Ain't no comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I got it.
Oh, yeah, I had to. I was wiggling my ass. I needed to.
It's all, uh, Brother Mark. He came, he's been. I don't blame him. I'm, I'm sitting here thinking about how hungry I'm getting. I, I think it's awesome. Because, you know, I remember Jimmy Harris was what I remember. I didn't know that he ever came.
Twiddle at a half?
Jimmy came most of the time.
I can't even put my hand in.
Yeah, yeah. Rude, but, but, but I, I mean.
Yeah, but I, I'll, I'll.
And, you know, now, if he, there might be one thing on here, you know, he won't sit for it, but other than that, I'd do the same thing, especially if it was supper at the house, I'd be on. That's what I'm saying. I know. Excuse me.
I saw a pigeon.
That was a hiccup. Did you hear that? Excuse me. A hiccup, yep.
They have to say trick or treat to get peace.
I bought one of those trick or treat bags, uh, yesterday. I was at Walmart, one of those nine-dollar bags. Because I buy a pack of candy here and a pack of candy there. And, um, that's part of the tree. I put out those candies. And I'm, and I'm.
Now I'm going to.
I saw, this is the first time we've done that, ain't it? Okay, I missed the first time. Look, look at Cliff. All right, Cliff, I'm gonna get a piece, I'm gonna get a piece of candy. Um, twix, I'm gonna take two twix, thank you, sir.
You know what this means? This means we got Cliff in for this.
Right.
Ridiculous.
I saw, uh, we were at, um, this Walmart, and just an average-sized bag was fifteen bucks.
Bought a few bags from Sam's, because I haven't called this from what church in Jameson's.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a worthy cause, but, I mean, I was, I knew it was going up, but I.
We don't get a lot of trick or treaters. I wondered if your house liked where it was.
It was kind of in an odd position.
And, and it's, that's sort of a dangerous road to walk up and down.
I mean, they can use a sidewalk. If we do, they come from the cul-de-sac.
Right, right, come both.
Mm-hmm.
That's one thing. And I, I enjoy it, but it's. I mean, if the weather's good, we have, we're just, we've got a lot of kids, all right.
Yeah.
And, and I'm, I'm sort of getting like the granddad stage, where I like to see little kids come by.
Sit on the rocking chair on the front porch.
Right, right. We'll sit out there and hand out to them. Uh, to resume, and next up, uh, is items, other agenda items. Uh, multi-purpose slash community center line item requests for expenses. Initial request was in August twenty twenty-five, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Yes, good evening. I am asking, um, that line items of expenses for the twenty-five thousand dollars that was set aside for the community center be provided. I initially asked that this be disclosed in August and now at this October meeting. So that is what I'm asking.
Councilwoman Hawkins, may I speak to that?
Sure.
So, um, I just wanted to remind council that the twenty-five thousand, and I think we have an additional amount of money this current budget year that we'll be setting aside, is put in what we call a reserve account. So, when that money is set aside in a reserve account, staff doesn't have the ability to go access it. It would need town council approval, because that's set aside in a reserve account for future use. So, we have expended money for things like the asbestos testing on the old church, the asbestos removal from what was found at the old church. Staff did tear up the, um, I'll call it old concrete basketball court and the old picnic shelter. I think that's what it was. And we also will be expending money for what McGill's doing in the design phase. So, we can get council and be glad to send that out via email of an accounting, the date of what money has been spent. But you will not see that deducted from the twenty-five thousand, because that's in a quote-unquote "reserve account." That make sense?
It kinda does, it's in a reserve account. However, those expenses are going to be pulled from that twenty-five thousand or not. So, give me the, um, reasoning now. If we have twenty-five thousand dollars set aside, that is in a reserve account until when?
Until council decides how and at what point in the project they would want to spend that money. Normally, it goes towards construction or something further down the line with respect to the project.
Okay, so, when I asked about this in August, was, this was not explained. Out, it was, what was explained was we, we used it to remove the basketball court. We removed this or that. That, that's what was explained. Therefore, I'm trying to figure out wh- what else, where else are the monies or what was left over is? So now, it's being shared that it's in a reserved account. And until the council says use it for said specific purposes.
Usually, reserve accounts are where you set aside your money. You're trying to build what the town's gonna put in towards the project. So, these monies that have been expended thus far, I believe we took some from our public buildings budget. We've taken, uh, we had staff, I believe, that, that did the, uh, demolition of the items in question. So there are things throughout the budgetary process that, uh, we can do small things. When it comes down to, uh, bigger expenses, then we'll look at what we have in reserve. But that's only really gonna not even begin to touch the total cost of the project itself. But that's what I also wanted to, to bring up, is that at some point in the near future, maybe during our annual planning meeting, we really need to delve down and talk about how we intend to fund what we're trying to and proposing to do with a multi-purpose facility. So there's a lot of facets going on. I know that Diana McGill and her staff are continuing to look at, uh, exterior possibilities for design. Uh, they're not yet ready to present to council, but of course, there'll need to be workshops on that as well. But I just wanted to clarify, I think I have in past meetings, mentioned the fact this was in reserve. Monies have been expended, just not from the twenty-five thousand. We don't have the authority to spend that money.
And again, and I thank you. But again, when I asked before, we were, I was told, this has been spent, that has been spent. So, as of today, the twenty-five thousand dollars have not been touched. And the council will be able to identify areas to touch this. I just wanna move a little further and state that while, um, this project has everybody knowing. I just wanna move a little further and state that while, um, this project has, everybody knows, and I've said it a thousand times, have been going on for twenty years. When there's a will, there's a way. And if we can build homes, take homes down, buy properties, sell property, get annexation, there is a will, there is a way to get a community center. All of this intricacy and planning and this and that, that is going on too long. Our youth, our elderly, and everyday people need a community center. And if the council would sit together and put their minds together with a well-bodied, able town, of skilled worker as well as residents that are skilled, a community center could be built within a month. This twenty-year business, and we still gotta work on and on, that is just, that is just unbelievable. If I didn't see it myself, I wouldn't believe it. So, thank you for that.
Well, Councilwoman Hawkins, if I may, I've been here sixteen of the twenty that have been mentioned, up until the purchase of the property behind the depot, and that has been in more recent years. That is the first real step that the town's taken towards trying to plan for a project. Having said that, as good as the folks we have in this town and on staff, there is absolutely no way that we could build and fund a multi-purpose facility. I think you were just trying to be descriptive, maybe I was wrong. Uh, but a multi-purpose facility in one month, as a matter of fact, just to go through the approval process, if we borrowed, let's just say twenty million outright, would take multiple months just to go through the approvals from the local government commission, et cetera. So I only say this to say that every step taken, since we identified Chapman as the property that council decided was going to be the property for this project, every step that's been taken towards the fruition of that ultimate goal, you know, it's, it's important. You have to have the plans, you have to be able to move forward. But at some point in the real near future, and there's only a couple of options, town's gonna have to make a decision on how we're gonna pay for it. So, there's different ways to do that, and I won't take up tonight's time to do that, but I, I think that's gonna go a long way and help us try to set the timeline moving forward on, on how it gets constructed.
And I thank you for that, and, and again, this community center has been discussed for twenty years. And two years ago, yes, Chapman Street had been identified. And again, and I thank you, yes, intricacies, we moved to running a multi-purpose center. However, a community center is a community center, and it does not need all of the intricacies. Uh, the people here in this town of Winneville need somewhere to commune.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next up is, uh, sunshine list dissemination of information to the public by the way, or emails. Uh, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Yes, so I just wanted to mention that the sunshine list is a very, um, is a very good resource, um, or is, is advent advantageous for residents, um, to be signed up for. The sunshine list is when you send in your email to the town clerk and any meetings, anything that involves meeting here at the town hall, maybe even events, that is then, um, sent out to those on the sunshine list. Many people do not know about the sunshine list. But as a town and as a town representative, I think it's important that they know it is a sunshine list that you can be on and that you can be abreast of meetings and things of that nature that is coming about. So that is what I wanted to mention. Um, you can email the town clerk, Don Harvey, Don dot Harvey, um, at winnevillenc dot com and ask him to put you on the sunshine list. Um, and if you email him, he'll have your, uh, email address, or you can designate an email address for that to go to.
Thank you. Next up is item to place, items placed on agenda by town councilwoman, persecution of censorship. A precursor, I'm sorry.
Not persecution.
No, I, I apologize. Precursor, I was reading too fast. Precursor of censorship, uh, restriction of representat- representation of voice, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins.
Thank you, so, um, and, and, and it's funny that you mentioned that word persecution. I feel like I've been persecuted for speaking on behalf of things that are beneficial to the people. So, I just wanted to say that last month, um, there was an introduction or a prospective introduction of a policy, um, that was provided, um, to the council or by the council, or provided by the mayor. I believe you, um, constructed it, which essentially said that, um, there was a request for a synopsis of, um, any items placed for about two to three sentences explaining what is discussed. Then, if this is approved, it will be discussed. If not understood, it would be pushed back until clarification. Um, so, what I feel like is that there, I've put many, many things, many, on the town council agenda since serving as town council, because I feel like I'm up here for the people, right? And then I also have copies of every single thing that I've said in the minutes. This is in terms of anybody who wanna verify what I've been saying, I've done, and I've spoke up for, I got copies for that. But what I'm saying is, I've never said anything obscene, I've never said anything profane or belligerent. I've only spoke in terms of what is needed, what is suggested, what is deserved. And I, I feel like that was directly, um, like, I feel like it's, like, what I'm putting on the agenda has to be screened. Um, I also feel like that is a precursor for just stating, hey, no, I don't want you to talk about that. And, and, and this infringes on free speech. And I know people are saying, no, we just want clarity, no, it was clear enough. Because when you look at this entire agenda, there is nothing explaining anything. There are no sentences, there are nothing. There are just statements and new business and everything else. So I did not find that to be good. I hope that when the council does meet in terms of changing policies, that they will look at the big picture. And what you are doing is infringing on free speech and representation. And I know i- i- it's within council's right, because I looked it up. That you can set what's on the item agendas, but if you're going to do that for one part of the agenda, you need to do it for all. And so that is what I needed to say for that, and I'm done with that.
Thank you.
Mayor, ma'am.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I just want a point of clarification for anybody in the audience who may not be aware. We are provided an agenda packet, um, in advance of the meeting. Oftentimes, it is two hundred pages or so. Many of us have it electronically, um, so that we can reference it through the meeting. So there are abstracts, explanations, documentation, copies of the contracts that are discussed, reports from the various departments and things like that that are provided to us. I just didn't want anybody to think that we come in and have one page and we have nothing to, to reference prior.
Thank you. Next up is, uh, town organization map, hierarchy, and structure of, of town, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins.
And so, as I have shared, I have been speaking on behalf of the people of Winneville. And it is, uh, been offensive to, to some of the council. It is a, how dare you? It is a, please be quiet. It is a, how are you digging these things up? And i- it shouldn't be. If we say we're here for the town, we're here for the town. And as I said again, it is infringing upon my free speech. In terms of the town organizational map, um, the town has an organizational map that was presented during the vision setting meeting in the beginning of twenty twenty-four. This organization map, um, is a visual of what the town is. And on this, uh, organizational map, and I could not find mine anywhere, but I can rest assured, I, 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 I have it. Um, and I'm going to try to show it to you right now. On this, um, map, the citizens sit at the top of this organization. Then the town council comes underneath, then the town manager and her staff. What I don't want to be mixed up is that the town staff comes first, the town manager comes first, the town council, and then the people. It is the opposite way around. The citizens are at the top of this town. You get to say what happens in this town. This is your town hall. Do not let anybody make you feel like you are infringing on them, like this is their house and you are walking in it. This is your town, and you have a right to be here, you have a right to speak, you have a right to get anything that is deserving. Again, Google it or look in the website of Town of Winneville for the organizational map. And in fact, I believe that the town organization map should be out there with the pictures of the town council or anywhere else. This should not be the first time anybody hears about a organization map. The citizens are at the top. And as A.G. Cox once said, the town is of its people. And that is what I needed to say.
Thank you, but let me, let me, let me, let me back up, uh, Councilwoman Hawkins, I think. And I'm, I'm speaking for me, but I'm also, I think I'm speaking for everyone on this board. Um, no one is against anyone on this board, let's make that clear. We're here to serve and do what we're supposed to do. I mean, we're gonna agree to disagree, but we're gonna move on. But I don't think anybody's blatantly trying to salivate anybody on this board, because we all have a voice. We tuck and hope, uh, to do what we're supposed to do here. And also too, once the people step into the chamber, there is a sense of decorum here. And it's gotta be followed. Uh, you know, uh, every citizen do have the right to come. That's why we have a public hearing, uh, section, that if they wanna voice their concern, they're, they're, I'm sorry, public comment section, I'm sorry. Public comment section, if they wanna voice their concern, they able to do that. And even if they can't make it here, uh, we provide it where they can send it in to our clerk. And they, and the clerk can read that concern to us as well. So, I mean, you know, that's what I want to make clear to the audience as well.
And so, thank you, Mayor, for making that clear. Uh, I in no way said that you need to be out of decorum. I said what I said. The people are at the top of this organization, and that is just a pattern of the opposition. Whenever I say something, there's opposition. I am not going to speak in the manner in which anybody wants me to. I'm delivering my message to the people of Winneville. I'm letting them know that they are at the top of this organization and that we are, in fact, here to serve them. I did not say that out of my mouth, that we are not here to serve them. And yes, I do feel like, um, everything that I've said, everything that I've put on the agenda has been scrutinized. But again, that is your all's right, and that is mine. And we are here, yes, we are a board together, but we stand on our own and with our own principles. And if you do not fall in line or do the status quo, quote, that doesn't mean you are against anyone. That just means that you have a wherewithal in yourself to speak to what you believe. And it is my hope that that is indeed respected.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just say real quickly, I'm the one that, that created the organizational chart and have it available. If you need another copy, I'll be glad to get the council another copy or anyone who would like a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is, uh, items for future agenda and future work sessions. You want to speak to that or?
Yeah, I'll just speak really quickly. We have three items that, uh, I think this is the third month they've been on the agenda. Town strategic plan, uh, amendments to code of ordinances, council rules of procedure, and accessory dwelling units. Uh, we will just need to work on some dates, and we can certainly do this maybe during our annual planning meeting. Uh, I will say number three may, there's a bill out there that, that may push us along towards allowing accessory dwellings. Uh, I do think that it gives us a timeframe for us to put our local spin on our own ordinance. I think it's January two thousand twenty-seven, I'm doing that off memory.
That's correct.
Okay, um, check me off, Keen, that I got that date right. That's about the only date I get right, but yes.
You did fine, yeah.
Um, we'll, we'll keep you up to speed as, as that moves through the, the process at the legislature. But nonetheless, just, you'll continue to see these plus anything that you come up with to add to that list moving forward.
Now, you said that we would look at the strategic, uh, plan after our annual letting meet.
Dates for, uh, workshops to work on the strategic plan.
That's not flowing with me. Our strategic plan should, should be part of our annual meeting agenda.
Well, it, you're not gonna be able to get it done in one night, so.
And, yeah, but.
I, I think that working with the league, which is the indication I got that, that, you know, who we wanted to work with, I think it would just be a matter of trying to get the updated dates from them, uh, for twenty twenty-six and then just having you all choose when to go through that process. Through that process, does that make sense?
But we put out our annual meeting after then, right?
I mean, that to me seems. I think we can do it any way that, that you all wanna do it. The premise of the annual meeting is to set goals and objectives for the year twenty twenty-six. So I understand what you're saying in terms of the timing of that. There's nothing to say that you can't go ahead and have the annual meeting during the, you know, latter part of January like we normally have. And then once the strategic plan is approved, you could certainly then go back and reassess priorities. But I think as staff, we, we will certainly do what council wants to do in terms of, of, of that. I think we usually have it then to, to kind of go into the budget season. But it's certainly, we can create a budget without it, if that makes sense.
Strategic plan?
Without an annual planning meeting. The strategic plan is gonna be large-scale, uh, goals and visions for the town.
Yeah, that, that would be what I would assume that we'd be considering when we set our budget.
The strategic plan.
I, you know, you know, what, what are we gonna do towards getting to those goals in that year?
Right, I think there's, the ultimate strategic plan is gonna be a component of that. But I think your annual planning process, it'll cover things that aren't included in the strategic plan. So I think we're on the same page. I just think that, that, uh, this first time around, as we're trying to develop a strategic plan, the timing may be a little different, but I would, uh, just suggest that we leave ourselves open to coming back and reassessing once we have a strategic plan in place.
All right. The quarterly, uh, reports from department head are in all, uh, binders? Okay, uh, announcements, uh, Don, you got any highlights on the announcements?
On the page, so we just draw your attention to the page. Uh, November, there are two holidays, uh, where the town hall is closed, as well as we start to get in to the end-of-the-year holidays of, uh, Thanksgiving. And there'll be some other dates that'll be coming along, and I'll be, uh, sharing those on an individual basis.
And also to, uh, announce. And also too, announcement, of course, is early voting starts on October the 16th.
That's a complicated issue. Let me address that.
Okay.
It starts early voting on the 16th and that full week across the river only.
Right.
Not here in Winneville. Then on Monday, the 27th, I got it wrong earlier today, so it will start at the community room with those five days. And on Saturday, it will be over here. Election then is on Tuesday. I would point out one thing for elections this year. Those people that used to vote out Davenport Farm, is it Christ Church?
Christ Church.
Christ Church. They are not going to be voting out there. They have been mailed a notice from the Board of Elections. They will be voting at the operations center this year, this time only.
Well, I'm in that district and I haven't received my mail.
Then I would contact Don Davis at the Board of Elections.
Don who?
Dave Davis.
Davis.
Dave Davis. Yeah, you can call, you can call Don and he'll get it.
Yeah, but we have.
Dave Davis. I do the, I'm guilty of that.
I haven't received it, so.
Wasn't told when it was being mailed, but I was told they were going to be mailed.
I do think we could probably post that information on our respective outlets just so those folks would know.
Right.
That it's going to be a little confusing because they're going to vote with the folks at the Ops Center this year, but then next year it'll be at Reed and Branch Church.
Tentatively, that's what we're hearing that it will be at. And I don't know, I reckon I apologize to Don Davis.
All right. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, because these are separate, I encourage you to just keep those around your house and you can check off as times pass, but it's a, they serve as a good reminder, or in your car or wherever.
Okay. Thank you. Reports from the staff and the attorney.
I have no reporting tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith.
No, I'd just like to say, I think between now and our next meeting, we will have Veterans Day. And as always, I would like to thank everybody who has served in any of the branches. Your support and what you do for our country and our communities are greatly appreciated. Thank you to staff and the council. Hope everybody has a wonderful evening and until we meet again.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Pretty much same thing. I would thank the veterans for what they've done, thank our staff for all the things that they keep doing to keep our town running well. And is the program up there, Veterans Day program, that sponsors, usually sponsors?
I have not gotten any information from anyone relative to that. We will push it out just as soon as I get some. And just as a quick reminder, we'll meet on Monday and Veterans Day is Tuesday.
It is, okay. I know that it's one plan for the town, so be looking out for information on this.
Please have them send me some information so we can push it, push it out there.
All right. All right, Councilwoman Hawkins. He asked me.
Oh, okay, okay, absolutely. So I just wanted to say a quote from Maya Angelou, and it says, do the best you can until you know better. Then when you know better, do better. This is very important that we walk in a way in our life that we are doing better. Again, leadership is not being in charge, it is being in service. And when we see things that are not right, we need to do better. I would encourage you to get out and vote. I would let you know that when you vote, you are giving us up here the key to unlock opportunities, ideas, and everything else you are deserving. You are also giving us the key to lock things down, block things and stagnate for, stagnate things. So your vote is your power and don't let anybody take that from you. Go out and vote. As a daughter of a World War II veteran, excuse me, as a granddaughter of a World War II veteran, and as a daughter of a Vietnam veteran, I would like to also thank all of the veterans who ensure that our country is safe and sound. I am a proud American and that is why I am up here and that is why I have allegiance to my country and to the people being of, for, and by the people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Council.
Yes, I'd like to say thank you to all that, all of the citizens or our neighbors, because you all live in Winneville, that attended tonight. Thank you for being here, still being here. Thank you to our staff. You all always do an amazing job. I echo every council person that spoke before me regarding my gratefulness for veterans in our county in Winneville and across the country. Also, I'd like to thank everyone that came out to the Right for Revival ribbon cutting, the citizens, council that were there, Sheriff Paula Dance. Just thank you for that. The Right for Revival Mobile Market is very critical in helping with food insecurity, even though Winneville does have an 86% home ownership rate, there, we still have folks that are unhoused, we still have people that are hungry, and we still have people that are in need. So thank you all for coming out. If you have not had a chance to go by the Right for Revival van on Thursday, Mobile Market, excuse me, on Thursdays at 2:00, please go by there. They actually had a gentleman cooking, I think it was like broccoli. So they cook nutritious things and you can sample them and they'll give you the recipe. Also, as the mayor said, last week on Friday was World Mental Health Day. And so I ask you all that are listening, please don't judge what you, what you don't understand. And so, you know, we want to stop the stigma around mental health. Asking for help is strength. And last but not least, good luck to all the candidates that are running in this election season in Winneville and our surrounding counties. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Yes, I'd like to say, repeat, it's almost about the same things that already have been said tonight. Thank everybody for coming out tonight. Do we have one question too about a complaint that we did have about barking dogs? Do we have a follow-up on that?
Yes, Mayor Protimoney, we did have a follow-up. Staff responded to the property in question, spoke with the actual homeowner themselves and also reached out, I believe, to the complaint.
Good. And I think we are coming up also, I think we are still, we're coming up with animal control started.
The contract is still being worked on with Keen and the attorneys from the county. Staff's ready to go. I do think that in light of this situation, probably the number of dogs, the maximum number of dogs that we allow, we will be taking a look at our local regulation, maybe changing that, specifically referencing dogs, six months, puppies, basically. That's where this is really problematic. So I do see a need to try to take a look at that. But yes, we will be entering the contract with animal control, the animal services with the county and that will be seen.
Just a quick update, I got an email from Pitt County, I believe it was, it was the Wednesday or Thursday of last week. I should be hearing from them, from them soon. So I would assume we would have a contract probably in the next week or so.
And last, I want to thank our mayor tonight, you know, the silent prayer that we had for the loss that we have here in Pitt County at our high school at South Central. You know, no one ever think that when your child leave home in the morning, that you won't be able to touch, feel and talk to them again once they leave. So I say to you, do all you can, hug your, hug your kids, love your kids, do all you can for them. And don't take them for granted. And I say the same thing to the, our youth and our kids, don't take your parents for granted either, because we want the best for you too. Okay? So my prayers is definitely with the family.
Manager.
Mayor members of the council, I wanted to, and we put one in each of your seats, this is the brand new finalized brochure that has been put together for Winneville. It's an undertaking between the chamber and the town, but I think it's well done and certainly offers a plethora of information in a tri-fold. It does have a map on the back. There is a larger, more definitive map project being worked on as we speak, but I do think that encompasses Greenville and a larger Pitt County area. I think that's in a final review stage, but we have plenty of these available. We'll have them available for the citizens. I think they'll be at welcome centers. The chamber will have some, but I wanted y'all to get it just about as hot off the press as it comes. Thanks to staff as always for what you do. Couldn't do it without you and that's it.
Thank you. And I'm just going to say, echo, of course, the same thing. Veterans Day, we appreciate all our veterans that live in this, in this community and especially one of our veterans that's sitting right here on our council, our own attorney. We appreciate your service, Keen. And as I said earlier, with the loss of Ms. Robinson, that really hit hard. You know, me being the mayor, it was tough for me because it's one of these things where it's something that happens that you got to step up and make sure that you lead the community, do what you're supposed to do. And just brought back different things for me, you know, when you lose a loved one. I went into the family home, me and Luther, and I went to visit with them, took them a card on behalf of the town and just listening to her and just trying to be there for comfort and support and letting them know that the town is here. And I saw that from the outpouring of calls that I received. People wanted the help, people just expressing and wanted to know what could they do to help with this situation. And I wanted to say thank you to the community because that's who we are. We're winnable. The word says slice of the good life. I said before, the W and the E, but it really is what's in between. And that's what we showed in this time. When that family needed support, that's what we did. Everybody filled in the gap and that's what makes us winnable. So with that being said, I ask for adjournment.
Make the motion that we adjourn.
I have a motion on the floor and a second. Use your clicker. Thank you. Eight o'clock.